Welcome, everybody. We're gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance if you'd like to join us. The Pledge of Allegiance.
... of the United States of America. In due Republic, for which saints. Our nation, under God. In this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we got agenda to approve. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
To move.
Thanks, if I have a second?
Thank you.
All those in favor saying a five, I say an aye.
Aye.
Those both saying aye. Three, two, action items, close session. We got some meeting minutes from October 24, 2016. I have a motion to approve them as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Betsy, please.
Yep. Maddox.
Yes.
Seren.
Yes.
Whitehall.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
And Con.
Yes. We also, we got some discipline to do at a closed session, too, correct? Student A. We have a motion here to approve the expulsion of Student A for two years. The remainder of the 2016-2017 school year and the 2017-2018 school year. For acts of gross misconduct, Student A will be referred to the Sangamon County Safe School Program during the expulsion period. If enrolled, Student A must display appropriate attendance, grades, and discipline at Sangamon County Safe Schools in order to remain enrolled. Student A fails in any of these areas, the expulsion will immediately be implemented. Also, Student A will be given opportunity to apply for readmission to GHS for the fall of the 2018-2019 school year. The decision to readmit will be based on appropriate grades, attendance, and behavior at the Sangamon County Safe School Program. We'll do these both together. We also have a Student B to approve the expulsion of Student B for two years. Remainder of 2016-2017 school year and the 2017-2018 school year. For acts of gross misconduct, Student B will be referred to the Sangamon County Safe School Program during the expulsion period. If enrolled, Student B must display appropriate attendance, grades, and discipline at Sangamon County Safe Schools in order to remain enrolled. Student B fails in any of these areas, the expulsion will immediately be implemented. Also, Student B will be given the opportunity to apply for readmission to GHS for the fall of the 2018-2019 school year. The decision to readmit will be based on appropriate grades, attendance, and behavior at the Sangamon County Safe School Program. Do I have a motion to approve both of them as presented?
To move.
If I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Betsy, please.
Yes. Carter.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Seren.
Yes.
Whitehall.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
And Con.
Yes. Okay, moving on, communications, good news. Ms. Hogan and Mrs. Day, you've got some superheroes that you're gonna introduce. You want to?
Well, yeah.
Absolutely.
Somebody gets to get lucky enough to introduce this, right? The only reason I get the honor to introduce them is because at GIS, there's some wonderful things that this program has been enhancing in our students in the 5th and 6th grade. Obviously, we have three very important people here that are the Cree, wherever, there he is, the creators, as well as the facilitators. They will tell you, though, that they are not the Creating Superheroes program. If you see all the red, black shirts, all the boys in here, they are the Creating Superheroes program. The reason I get to introduce them, though, is because at GIS, we get to see the benefits of the 4th graders coming up to 5th grade, the 5th graders going into 6th grade, but also the benefits of all of those high school students that are now coming down into our building as really peer mentors. And so, I would like to introduce to you Eli, you are coming up as well, and Crystal Day and Pam Hogan to talk to you about how they facilitate and what amazing things these Creating Superheroes do. But you have to come over here. That's not cool.
Well, I guess I'll start off since I actually got back yesterday, so she decided that I get to, luckily, get to come and explain as well. But I go to the University of Alabama, so I couldn't be here as much this year, obviously. So, I got to kind of delegate the work back to the people who were helping me in the past couple of years. I know Brandon, Gregor, Aaron, Gage, all the guys that have helped have been a real kind of puzzle piece fitting in and continuing the program.
Well, the superhero program started out as a pilot program, a GES, with 25 boys, and what really, our real program is, is this is our program right here. We just kind of show up and hand out papers. They lead the program. Without their mentoring, there wouldn't be a program. It's expanded. We have, I figured, we have about 350 boys from the ages that are actively involved, from 4th, 5th, 6th, hoping 7th grade's coming over and helping our dodgeball tournament, and then our high school and young adults as well. Every year, that's between 250 and 300. We, the 4th grade is all about leading themselves. The 5th grade is pretty much the same. The 6th grade, we're trying to, you know, teach them that we're leading outside of our world, helping other people. Last year, our 7th graders made a newspaper. It was awesome. It was the superhero news, Times, and they were, you know, choosing superheroes at GIS and writing about them, and it was really good. This year, we're having a dodgeball tournament, and it's going to be for Families in Need in Chatham, so that's kind of what they're doing. The, like I said before, the mentoring that they do, that's really, that's really what it's all about. They, at one point during the football season, I was watching the 14-50 clips, and I saw the Hembrow boy was talking, and it just really stirred me about team. So, I called Coach Hay and I asked him if he could send over some players and talk about team, and he sent over six guys. It was, it was, the only mistake that, the only thing that wasn't perfect about it was that I didn't record it. But other than that, it was so, I mean, I don't know, my 6th grade superhero sitting here, was it really good?
Yeah.
It was, it was really good, wasn't it? I mean, 75 6th graders sitting on the edge of the seat quiet was for 30 minutes tells you it was really good. So, that's, that's just some of the ways. I know they came over for the drug, the drug prevention week as well, and that was really good, I thought, too. So, I don't know, does, would any of our superheroes, our young superheroes, would any of them like to share anything that they have learned from the program? Come on. I like it.
Well, it teaches you leadership, how to be a good leader, and how to, yeah, lead your team and do good, be a better person.
Excellent. I think the testimony is that when we started four years ago, we had the three of us and a few other people, and now, every time we ask and invite someone, they stay on board, and they bring everything they have. So, if you can imagine, every single person involved with this with a special gift that they now share, that's what amazes me. For example, you know, John Fletcher and Will, a father-son in the district, amazing. Ryan Hembrow stepped up, and he's been at almost everything. Jay Rigby, Gregor, Gage, Aaron, Brandon. That, to me, says so much about our district. If you just watch the program grow and expand, and you can see the pride in their faces and their smiles, you can see when they wear the shirts. Every little puzzle piece has fit for four years. We didn't really know what we were doing in the beginning, not that we do, but everything we did worked. Every bit of thing we ordered was exact number. Every time we have a sign up, it's the right amount. It's one of those things that, it's just a gift, it truly is, and to be able to watch all of these boys sharing it, it's an amazing feeling.
When it first started, it was mostly, mostly playing games, just inside of the gym in 4th grade and stuff. But now, when, when the original ones are getting older, it's starting to go to more donations and fundraisers.
Yep. They're giving back. For the dodgeball, I think we have 20 teams already from GIS.
Oh, wow.
That's gonna be a lot. So, thank you to everyone who has sponsored us.
Yes.
I mean, we really, really appreciate it.
The principals, everyone that's supported us.
If we forget to thank you, we're a little bit overwhelmed, but we really do.
Yes.
We're appreciative.
Any of our high school leaders want to say anything?
I'm just grateful to be able to give back to the kids, because I remember when I was younger, like, I didn't have these opportunities, but now that we do, it's awesome to see how they grow.
I was just gonna say that not only I see them grow and mature, but honestly, it teaches us a lot about things, about little kids, and how to be leaders of a group and such things. So, I think it not only helps them, but it helps us, so I think it's a great program.
Well, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Adults?
You're gonna have to pull out the adult team.
Very good. Did everybody hear that? They need more dodgeball teams so they can use adults. And you guys are welcome to stay if you'd like.
Oh, well, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Wow. Truly a good news report. Thanks for that. We also have on our good news, BCEF's annual Titan 5K Run and Walk Titan Track. Who gets to talk about that, you know?
Well, a board member would, does, is on the board, so.
The Titan, I'd love to talk about the Titan Track. I would. No, I was actually there, so it really was, it was a great event. As you know, our Education Foundation hosts the Titan Track. It efforts to raise money for, for our schools in our district, and there was, matter of fact, record-breaking turnout. I think the weather did have a little bit to do with it. I was fortunate to be one of the directors in an orange vest who, I almost left my post too early, and then I was directed back, but I'm sure they would have found their way. But we actually, $25,000 was raised for this event, which, of course, you know, through grants goes back to our classrooms to support our teachers and activities. And I gotta tell you, it's another thing, being a part of the Education Foundation Board, it is so rewarding. One of the things that I, a little bit different from last year, and I don't know a lot of the experiences prior to that, is the teacher representation we have on the board, and they've done a wonderful job going out into the schools and making sure that teachers are requesting things through grants to support things that they're doing in the classroom. And so, that's where that money goes to. Both the track and the trot were a lot of fun, there were tons of balloons, we had a great time, and I do want to say, they did a wonderful job. Mrs. Worley was, was out there.
I just want to know if I'm the oldest participant. I gotta get that. That's what I was saying. I might be.
It's likely.
I'll check it out. Hey, buddy, you come next year, see if I can beat you.
Probably.
It really was. It was a great time, raised a lot of money, and I will say, I believe there were a couple of board members' wives that were out there that said to make sure to kind of throw them under the bus at the board meeting if we talked about this.
I was at home with a four-year-old.
Oh, were you?
Yeah. That was my 5K.
Oh, okay, working.
Taking advantage of the nice days.
Yeah, 5K or at home with, with all the kids.
Well, only one of them, the other two were running the 5K.
No, but it was a great event, and it's really a neat, I mean, just the community that was out and about, and just a really all-around great feeling. So, we had a great time, and want to thank everybody. If anyone out there was there, thank you. Very successful event, and I want to thank the Ball, Chatham Education Foundation for doing such a, such a wonderful job.
Can we get a check, big cardboard check made up with?
I think they're doing that, I've heard that.
Can we do that next month, maybe, one of the?
I think they're, they're working on that.
No, if you can.
And I might add one thing. Logan Katz was the high school, he's the overall male winner, and I saw him running to the race and running home after the race. Because why not? I mean, you know, running the 3.1 miles isn't enough, so, oh my gosh, there he is. I mean, everybody had gone, the parking lot was empty, and here he is, running down the road, running home. Oh, my gosh.
And what was amazing was how, how far out in front he was.
Yeah. It's amazing.
Yeah, I couldn't have kept up with him on a bike. That kid was fast, so. He did, he did a great, it was crazy. Did a great job, it was a lot of fun. So, thank you.
Okay, more good news. Looks like we have some recognition, so we have school board member.
Well, you're the ones getting recognized.
We had a day.
Yeah, last Tuesday.
Did you get the flowers?
Didn't know that.
Yeah, well, they're on the way.
Last Tuesday was School Board Appreciation Day, and obviously, it's not enough to say the things that we said about the amount of work you guys do. I don't know how many of you really understand the amount of time that goes into being a board member and what you guys do and the tough decisions you have to make. You know, there's a saying, what's right isn't always popular, and what's popular isn't always right, and I think you guys deal with that all the time. You have to make tough decisions, and so, it's only right that there's a, there's a day set aside to recognize you for all the time and effort and agony maybe you go through sometimes and make decisions because they're, they're very tough. And there's been some tough decisions made in this district in the last several years, and you guys have to make them, so. There is a day to, to recognize you for that, and as each year, the school, the principals of each school pick out some books to be donated to our library in honor of you, and we ask, you, I see you're signing them, so we ask that you sign those, if we can take those back to our school and put those in our library. But thank you for everything you do, and I hope you enjoyed your day.
And who do we have to thank for our new name tags?
Well, here's, no, here's, here's what, Don, I, I've worked in previous districts where coordinated something with one of the art teachers, so I just reached out, and I think most of you know Kristen Welber. Matter of fact, she's in here quite a bit doing hanging art, and we just got into a conversation, and as we did, she goes, I think it'd be great, the kids. So, in the Art Out of the Blue program that, that she runs, she had an Art Out of the Blue Day, and so, she wanted, not wanted, but her students wanted to make you, and I, you know, a thank you out of a board. So, everyone was provided this, so you parents.
Those are so much cooler.
You know what that is? There you go. Look at that, that looks good. So, so they just, I want to extend a thank you to her and her students for the time they spent in putting this together. They, you know, did a great job, and she sent pictures of them doing it. I'll forward them to you in the Friday notes or something, but had a great time. But I also, in addition to that, wanted to read a brief statement, and this is, has to do with your educational leadership and the recognition that goes out, and this is a, a standard statement that goes out to all boards when they are recognized. This is to recognize the outstanding efforts of the nearly 6,000 elected school board members throughout the state. November 15th is designated, and was designated, as School Board Member Day in Illinois. Is an opportunity to build community awareness, understanding about the essential role of locally-elected Board of Education members, and the duties that they assume in representative democracy. This year's School Board Members Day theme is Leadership Starts Here. So, on behalf of everyone, thank you so much for the work that you do, not only as an employee, but as a parent of this fine district. Thank you.
Thank you. They also say it's a thankless job, but I think we just got thanked, so I appreciate it. Moving on, consent. I don't know, we gotta ask to see if anybody has anything they want to address the school board concerning any agenda item. Anybody want to bring anything up at this point? Nope. Okay, moving on, consent agenda items. We got 5-1 to 5-9. Anybody wish to poll them? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve, I missed presenting? Thanks, Brandon. Thanks, Dwayne. Betsy, please.
Yes. Seren.
Yes.
Whitehall.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
And Con.
Yes. Moving on, personnel consent items. We got 6-1 to 6-18. Any wish to poll any of them? Hearing none, and do I have a motion to approve that missed presenting? Thank you, Brandon.
Second.
Thank you, Dwayne. Betsy, please.
Whitehall.
Yes.
Worley. Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Seren.
Yes.
Con.
Yes. Moving on, new business, 7-1 Speech Team Competition Kentucky.
Probably the fourth or fifth year, the Speech Team is asking permission to go to a tournament in Bowling Green, Kentucky. You've approved it each of the last four or five years. We bring it because they're traveling across state lines, basically, and letting you know what they're doing. It's, it's one of the bigger tournaments in the country, and they've had some great, great success there. Boosters and students themselves pay for majority of the items. The school just pays the registration fee and, and judges fees. In speech tournaments, when you go to big tournaments, you have to take judges with you because there's just so many people needed to do that, so. That would fall between the range of $800 and $900, but the boosters for the speech take care of the hotel rooms, students take care of their meals, boosters take care of transportation. So, they'd like to go back to this, this big tournament and the opportunities to come with it, but need your blessing to do so, since it's gonna be overnight and cross-state lines. They provide, I'm sorry?
How many?
It's usually 30 to 35. All kind of depends on what, how many kids they have qualified for each type of different debates they have and speeches they have. And then they will have the proper amount of chaperones, and they'll all be background checked and so on.
We have a speech boosters?
Mm-hmm.
Of course we do.
You don't hear about it, we hear about it.
Yeah, they work pretty hard.
Still waters run deep.
My daughter was on speech team.
Say that again.
Still waters run deep.
Still waters run deep.
Do we take our own judges?
Yeah.
Yeah. But they don't judge our kids.
Even when you go to tournaments around here, that's what you do.
They don't judge our kids, though.
No.
No. No, we just.
If you remember, even throwing them in the pool, the Card Boy went last year to the Nationals, we had to take a judge. That's what happened, his mom was a judge.
Yeah, when I did speech, your, your teacher could be in the room where you give it, or they may not, they're just each assigned a room. And there's usually two or three judges per room, so.
So, they just put pool and leave them all somewhere. Got you. I have a motion.
To move.
Second.
Second.
Betsy, please.
Yes. Worley.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yep.
Seren.
Yes.
Whitehall.
Yes.
Con.
Yes. Thanks, Jim.
You bet.
7-2, 2016 tax levy presentation. Charlotte Walker.
This thing is just scooting along tonight, isn't it?
Well, it was.
It has slipped in just a little bit now.
Well, this usually takes a while. I'm kidding, Charlotte.
I know. The tax levy represents 71% of our revenues, which is a lot of money, and if we don't ask for the levy, we're not gonna get that money. The asking part is part of this process, why I'm here tonight. The tax levy lifecycle, we've completed our analysis, made our estimates for property, new property exemptions, none of which will really be known until after January. It's a lot of estimating. What I'm asking the board to do tonight is to adopt the tentative resolution on the levy. It has to be into the county clerk by the last Tuesday of December, so they can process and create the final tax extension. The county treasurer then will collect it from the homeowners, and then they will distribute it back out to us. So, if we look at some of the terminology that I'll be using tonight, I'm not very good at this little roller thingy. The EAV is the equalized assessed value of property. The CPI is the Consumer Price Index, currently at 0.7%. The levy is the amount of money a school district asks to be raised for local property taxes. PTEL is the Property Tax Extension Limitation Law, and that's a mouthful. That's why people just refer to it as PTEL. It is the property tax extension, and the law commonly refers to that as tax caps, but that's very misleading. It doesn't cap property taxes, and it does not cap property assessments. Instead, PTEL allows a taxing district to receive a limited inflationary increase in tax extensions on existing property, plus an additional amount for new construction, newly annexed areas, and recovered TIF valuations. The extension is the actual dollar amount that's billed to the property owners in the district, as determined by the county clerk. Later, you'll hear me use the term the aggregate extension, that's just merely referring to the prior year extension on all funds. The limiting rate is associated with PTEL. It's calculated by the county clerk, by the county clerk. After calculating preliminary rates for the funds, the county clerk will compare the sum of those rates to the limiting rate. If we're over, they proportionally reduce every one, so that we fall under that, under that PTEL. The truth in taxation, if the current year's tax levy request exceeds 5% over the previous year, a public hearing must be held to explain the reason for the levy and the tax increases. So, let's dive into the important stuff. In step one, the PTEL, the school district can increase the prior year extension by 5% or CPI, and CPI is 0.7%. This only results in $189,000, a little over $189,000, giving us $27,207,512. We're gonna use that number in step two. We're gonna take that and look at our, our EAV that was received by the county clerk's office, which was $738,285,527. However, not all assessors have reported market value increases. Six different assessors, their reports impact that value. It's Ball, Chatham, Cotton Hill, Divernon, Kern, and Woodside. This EAV does not include new construction, which allows the taxing body to collect their fair share, doesn't, it's out of the PTEL process. Expiring TIF districts are also considered new construction, so our limiting rate is 3.6852 on and on. In step three, we multiply the limiting rate computed in step two by the total EAV. An estimate of the new property, as I stated, was received by the county clerk. I also received the estimate of what they had so far as new construction and the expiring TIF rate, but we want to maximize, because we're guessing on these values, we want to maximize to be able to catch all of it, so we used an additional $30 million. This gave us the $768,285,527, times that limiting rate gives us a tax levy, $28,313,081. In step four, we estimate, we use that estimation to see if we are 5% greater than the previous year. We are not. So, we wouldn't necessarily have to have that truth in taxation hearing, however, as a rural mini-school districts make it routine to do so every year, and we have elected to do that. In step five, we start the process of allocating that 28-plus million to all the various funds, with the exception of the debt service fund. The county clerk will actually use our repayment schedules to assess those individual levies for each of the bond accounts. These are the allocations. Little over $21 million to the ed fund, 3.9 to operations and maintenance, 1.4 to transportation, little over $113,000 in working cash, and $200,000 for the fire prevention and safety. So, the impact to our homeowners, the, the average homeowner with a $180,000 home, the assessed value on that's gonna be $60,000 by state statute. When we compare that to our tax rate from last year, compared to the requested weight this year, we are at a deduction of $44.52 for that homeowner. That's all based on that, the property values, though, and that guesswork, it all comes together, so will that be what really happens? I, I don't know, but according to the calculations I'm using, if we had those property values, the rate would, the taxpayers' tax would go down. This graph shows you kind of how that works. If the existing EAV is down, the tax rate's gonna go up. When the EAV is up, the tax rate goes down, which this is the scenario we're in, it's like more property owners to spread the tax request that I'm making, and so that makes sense that it would, that it would go down. And this is our tax levy calendar. I apologize, there is an error. I probably looked at this thing 100 times and did not see that until today, but tonight is when I'm asking you to approve this levy, the tentative levy. If you notice, tentative's not right. On the 8th- On the eighth, we will have the notice of the hearing published in the newspaper. The nineteenth will be the hearing, which is in conjunction with our board meeting. March or April is when we'll see, when we'll receive that levy. I think I started here in March, and I think I was only here a week, and that tax levy came in. And so we verified all that information. In May or June, they send out tax bills, and either in May or June, we start getting the money from the taxpayers. Any questions? I either explained it so you understood it, or you didn't, so...
So basically, the levy is merely a request.
Correct.
And our truth in taxation hearing, is that where we... I mean, at step two is we have to request a truth in taxation hearing, because we are asking what we're going to, because we are requesting more than five...
No, we're requesting...
Requesting more than...
We're under five percent. We wouldn't have to have one, but a lot of districts just make that routine, that every year, you're going to have that hearing, and it gives the public a chance to come in, ask questions, before you actually sign the true levy papers that I will take to the county clerk.
Isn't this the one every year I get confused on, and I wonder why we're not asking for a hundred percent every single time?
Yeah.
Isn't that what this is?
Yeah. You ask for like eleven or twelve or thirteen percent.
Because we know we're not going to get it all, right?
Well, it doesn't matter, because you're under PTEL, so you can only get point seven this year. What my understanding of the hearing is, we don't want to miss any new construction, which it's been about ten million a year, and we're asking for thirty, just in case, because things are ramping up. Is that kind of how I'm reading this?
Yeah, we got about eight million in expiring TIF district, and about fourteen million. But you saw all those assessors that feed into this, and not all of them have given their information to the county clerk. It just takes one big project to get missed, and then we won't capture those tax dollars. We only get this one shot at new construction to capture it, because next year, it goes into the... You look at last year's extension, and so you lose that opportunity, so it's important to capture all that new construction. I think Russ last year used the number of seven hundred and sixty-nine million. His request was twenty-nine million. It got kicked down to twenty-seven million by the time PTEL was put in place. He didn't use the PTEL calculation. I did use the PTEL calculation in the limiting rate, so I think I'm close, but I'm only close if that estimate is correct on new property, and I didn't want to miss any new property.
But the assessors have reported to you.
The assessors report to the county clerk all of those property values. He's not going to have that information until January, but by law, I have to do this now. I'm not from the school world. It doesn't make good business sense to me to do it now instead of January, but this is the way it is.
We have had as much as, I believe, ninety million in new construction. It's been a long time, but...
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlotte. At this point, then, we need to recommend... Actually, the administration's recommending that we approve the tentative tax levy as presented by the motion.
Second.
Thanks. Second. Thank you. Betsy, please.
Yep, Carter.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Seren.
Yes.
Whitehall.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
Cobb.
Yes. We also need to set a date for the truth in taxation hearing, and that is December nineteenth, twenty sixteen, at six thirty P.M. I recommend... Do I have an approved... Motion to approve that as presented? Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll make that second motion.
Thank you. Betsy, please.
Maddox.
Yes.
Seren.
Yes.
Whitehall.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
And Cobb.
Yes. Moving on, triple I conference update.
I have a couple update comments I'd like to make.
Jump right in.
I'm doing my job. Basically, we all received this delegate resolutions committee report, and I would like to advise you that one of the resolutions that was proposed by IASB, and that was voted down...
It's not proposed by IASB, it's proposed by the districts.
Oh, I... Okay, IASB boards. That's what this says.
Not the board.
Well, that's what it says.
Okay.
It says... Well, okay, it says... I'll just read the... I'll read what has been said. "Be it resolved that the Illinois Association of School Boards shall support legislation that would not require school districts to be financially accountable for student special education services beyond the student's nineteenth birthday, if the student has enough credits for graduation." This resolu... This proposal failed. It failed, and there were many comments made by different delegates, and the concerns that were posted, that I just wrote down, were that this is against federal law. Because of the lack of services by the state, the current lack and uncertainty of services, basically for post-secondary students, that representatives felt it was important that the school districts still keep this umbrella in existence to their birthday twenty-first. Okay. Now, the vote on this, the vote failed, and the vote was a hundred and sixty against and a hundred and nineteen four. So it failed. The second thing that was... A second resolution that failed was this. That basically, "The Illinois Association of School Boards shall support legislation that amends the election code to prohibit a school district to be used as a polling place during elections for student safety reasons." This failed. A hundred and seventy-seven voted against it, and a hundred and forty-four voted for it. The main... One of the several reasons were given as to the rationale of not to support it were that these were taxpayer-funded buildings, and that taxpayers also should have a safe, convenient place to vote for seniors. Reasons to support the resolution is primarily concerns over the student's safety during the election day. Other comments made were TIF days can be used on election day. Again, it was a close vote, a hundred and seventy-seven against and a hundred and forty-four for. Now, a personal observation that I made to some official guy was that, basically, this was an OMA meeting, and they...
No, it's not that meeting, the delegate assembly. They're not subject to open meetings. It's not.
No? Okay, well, then, this is a personal objection I made, is that the respondents and the people who came before the mic were very well-prepared. They all had written statements, very pointed, and the dissent was becoming clear, and yet there were not many, not many, but there were persons that were waiting to give their opinion, and they weren't permitted to do so. I mean, it was in a moment of expediency, I guess, but I found it... I didn't like it, because the board members that came up to speak before the entire group were very well-prepared, and so I voiced my concern about that. And as it was, the meeting is run efficiently, so it's always interesting. You could be the delegate next year.
But they... Both of them, the IASB recommended to vote yes, and they got voted down.
The resolutions committee said...
Right.
You know, recommends to the delegate assembly that yes, go ahead and vote for it. And what I'm surprised is, and I didn't know that when I withdrew it about federal law, why... They could still work toward it on that first one. It's interesting. So a district brings forth a resolution to the resolutions committee. The resolutions committee says, yes, we agree with this, or no, we don't, and all of those, the yeses and the nos, then go before the delegate assembly to be voted on. And the IASB is an association, but it's not subject to Open Meetings Act, because it's not...
Okay, that's true. But I just happened to be sitting next to a guy that was on the resolutions committee or who was somehow, you know, in the know, and he basically said there was a great deal of discussion on these two resolutions, and there wasn't, you know, it was a... It wasn't a unanimous... I mean, it was ultimately included, but it was not an unanimous decision among the resolution committee members, so...
And also, even if that first one that said, you know, one of the arguments was that it was against federal law, the lobbyists who lobby on behalf of the alliance, which comprises the triple I lobby, both at the federal and the state level, so they could have voted to overturn that law on the first one, the special needs.
Well, I'm not an expert... I'm not an expert on this. I was just taking down the notes as if they were...
I appreciate it. It's a long process, isn't it?
I was just taking the notes, you know, I wanted... So I have fulfilled my duty of reporting back to the board.
We appreciate that.
We probably need to do a better job next year, letting you know how we're going to vote, because we rushed it this year.
Yeah.
Good job.
So you're going to do it next year also? On that chair familiar with?
If I was enough of a troublemaker, I probably should do it again. No, I mean, it's a good experience, and I don't know. I think people should, you know, go round robin on this.
So the new board members that come on, if any?
No, it was an interesting experience.
Anybody else have any comments? Takeaways?
Personally, I thought it was a great event. I always think it's... For us, it was a heavy legislative-laden event in regards to things that are on the horizon, but it always seemed to... Whether it talked about pension and pension reform, whether it talked about evaluative processes, whether it talked about taxation, funding, different things, it always came down to the struggle between the aisles, and particularly Madigan and Rowner. And, you know, until those relationships... The theme tend to be, until those relationships can improve, we're going to continue to see much of what we've seen recently, so... There was a lot of cynicism amongst many. There was some hope as well, because I know that there were a lot of people with... A lot of bright minds. It's amazing how many bright people are around the table, but can't get the work done. And so it's... I know my hope, and I think your hope as a community, is that the sooner they can begin to work together to really solve problems, the sooner things will happen, particularly with Rowner supporting the turnaround agenda, and much of which is contained within that is somewhat antagonistic to the agenda of the other side of the aisle, so...
One other thing that I went to, it was a LUDU-only, large unit, district association-only event, and basically, for quite a long time, they explained about what's called evidence-based revenues.
Evidence-based funding.
Funding, evidence-based funding, and a tremendous amount of work has been worked done on this over the last few years. And it's... It was really interesting to me. Theoretically, it makes a lot of sense. It's going to be difficult ultimately to try and have districts agree to share the money. Those districts that have high sources of EAVs would have to support, based on median, lots of median factors, you know, I don't need to list them. But what it would ultimately entail is, those with a lot of money would have to help support districts that need help, all based mathematically. And of course, that was a question that superintendents wondered about.
It's a big ticket item. There are about five or six states right now that currently have implemented it. It's working well, but it's a redistribution of funding, and so many of your wealthier districts who have per pupil ratio in regards to expenditures is a great deal more than others, and so the reluctance on them to wish to share those dollars, troublesome, so...
Yeah, you know, one of the things that bothers me is... Not bothers, but, you know, we're at... The board is asked, you know, we have the opportunity to present ideas that merit consideration. And one of the things, and Lisa, maybe you know the answer to this. Why is Illinois only one of seven states that still uses Park? Is that... Why is that?
I is being mixed up determination, I believe.
Well, okay, so I... Well, I think that's the superintendent's job.
No, I saw on the bylaws, it said Susan Moreland's job.
I think that's a really... I mean...
So moved.
Okay, well...
No, we do. We have our roundtables, our discussions around Park, and we are one of seven, and I would say, you know, there's a financial commitment on behalf of the state that they are obligated to, so I wouldn't say in the short term, and I would also say, based on political boundaries, that we probably wouldn't be the sixth, the fifth, the fourth, the third, or even the second. That would... There's a pretty good chance that Illinois would hold on to it for some time. That's just my...
Is that because they made a contract agreement that was excessively too long?
I don't know.
Next time you have a... Next time you have a lunch with Tony Smith, why don't you check in with him?
And I would imagine that Jeff Rose may be old.
Now, Jeff actually does have a lot of good information on that, so... But what I will do is, I mean, on the... I do want to say on the evidence-based funding model is something that I'd actually like to put on our website. I think it's better that we educate our public about, because this is the funding formula that tends to have the greatest amount of attention out there, so it's good that we educate our public on that.
On a lighter note, there's just a ton of information, if you want to learn about being on a school board, and I know you may hear that we had fun at night or something, which we may or may not have, but we went to a lot of seminars, and basically, like, split up a lot, so... One of the things I learned was there was a guy I was talking to about lunches, and he was... They had a booth, and they were proving that you could have healthy food that tasted really good, and did. And then they talked about food is also a peer pressure thing, so if it's cool, they'll eat it even if they weren't sure if they liked it, and you can raise your number of kids that are not bringing lunches. And they gave us some taste tests. It was really good food, and they said they do things like, if it doesn't pass eighty percent of the taste test in your school... That was one of the tests they recommended, so that it doesn't go on the menu, so... It's all up to the kids. It's kind of cool. I don't know what I'd do with that.
Well, you know, chemia, which generation... Well, you know, chemo with Generation H has, Gen H has revamped our school menu K8 anyway, and so actually, you could even give them, give that information to her staff to share if you wanted to, because it certainly has been a concern here, K8, is kids not liking the healthier food alternatives. So we can nominate you to talk to Gen H.
Thanks, Lisa.
I'd like to thank Randy for presenting this year, and I understand you had a packed room for your presentation.
Yes, including a couple of school board members. It was very nice. It was fun.
You were very well spoken.
Thank you.
It was packed, it was hot, and yet, you know, it was well-attended. I think it's an area, it's a subject area that board members don't know much about, but, you know, need to learn about. And I think, I came out of that room thinking that Balch Adam was on the cutting edge because of your independently-written policy that we approved. Independently-written policy on, like, under, went to use...
Use force.
Yeah. It was...
And Susan stood in the doorway, and I, the way she ran about halfway through, she came in and sat down.
Did you have to use force?
I did not. I did not. That was a good opportunity, I was planning to do it.
Thanks for doing that, Randy. We're very well prepared to show it to you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry I missed it, I told you that already, because I went to talk to, or listen to, the educational funding issues with our legislators, and I learned absolutely nothing. So I regret not...
There wasn't, I mean, I suppose you and I could have shared a seat. It was packed. No, it was crowded. It was the last session of the day, Randy, so it was very good.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, communications, future board meeting dates, board activity dates. What do we got? December 5th, we got Facilities and Grounds Committee meeting, 19th, regular board meeting, Transportation meeting, January already? Wow. New year.
We have a Finance Committee meeting in there too, correct, Charlotte?
We do, yes.
It'll get posted.
Joe has the date.
Excuse me?
Joe has the date.
Yeah, right, okay.
And then a reminder for filing nominating papers, December 12th through the 19th, anybody wanting to run for open seats on the school board. Anything else?
Finance Committee's on the 13th.
13th.
And when's the dodgeball tournament?
September 10th.
Is there a deadline for...
The 29th of November is the deadline.
So anybody want to put a team in that can write it?
You certainly can. It'd be great fun. We will not let you play against any fifth and sixth graders, so...
Can we recruit it? How many are on a team?
Five. You can recruit Randy.
I also did want to say, for our principals, right along with some light reading, the Illinois School Codebook that just came in, so...
Them doorstops over there.
Those are... I mind you, 40 years ago, they were that thick. So, yeah, it's quite a bit of reading, but they actually, the state accidentally printed the first ones a couple months ago, and there was some inaccurate information. So I received an email, and they said, please do not distribute. And they printed all new ones, so we just received them, so...
And there's wording on every page?
There is.
Yeah, there's a little legal thingy.
Are you recommending that the board have a dodgeball team, and then like the industry have a dodgeball team?
I'm just saying that the more teams you get, the more money they make. Is that how it goes?
Exactly.
And there is an adult league, or an adult tournament?
There is.
And it's coed?
Maybe it is. All of them.
What time is it?
It's 12:00.
The adults is at 12:00.
But it's $10 to person.
Can I just give you $20 and ask you to...
Or James has chemo that day.
We can put cutouts up, so...
Is there an elderly team?
I think that's a yes also.
Yes.
All right. Does anybody have anything they need to bring before us concerning any topic at all?
I just wanted to say something, if you guys remember me, I'm Brandon with Cardinal. We went with you guys over the summer doing the Security upgrade project. And I didn't have anything prepared, but it's coincidental, it's Thanksgiving weekend, not intentional, but very often, you go through the process of bidding and design and everything, and it's very arduous, and then you never circle back to come back and say thank you. But on behalf of myself and Cardinal and everyone, I did want to thank you to Randy and his SROs, and everyone that did everything, Josh, all his guys that we beat on all summer long for networking issues, the principals, the assistant principals, the custodians who are trying to wax floors and new furniture, and we're dragging tables around, and everyone. We really do appreciate everything you've done, especially you guys. You know, there was the bidding process, and the project went well after, once we got started, you know, we made the attempt at reusing as much as we could, and we were successful, I think, in almost every aspect of that. We didn't have to have any major change orders with, because of failures or because of anything else, we were able to stay on the same platform. So overall, it was a very successful project, in no small part from everyone here that helped us with it. But as I said, I just wanted to say thank you to you guys for your faith in us. And I think the best way to say thank you, after it was all said and done, we did well. We didn't make a lot of money, we didn't lose any money, but we would like to offer some back to the district as a donation. I didn't bring a check tonight, because I didn't know the process on who to make it to, or how you wanted to do it, but that's just a small way that we can say thank you. I think it's important. As a business, sometimes businesses get bad name, but we try, I try and teach my children that the best way to learn is to learn by example. And my example is being a good citizen of the world and a good community member, and that's the way that we can do it, is offer something back. So I'll work with Randy or whomever on... On how to... Like I said, I just wanted to say thank you. And thank you especially to all of you guys that took me to the hospital.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to make one quick comment. We did have, at Mr. Lovelace's request, an additional camera to be installed at the bus barn that we hadn't accounted for. And we, as Brandon said, we made a lot of changes over the summer and this fall. And Brandon and his crew agreed to put the camera in for me at his cost, without any labor, so I appreciate that. Saved us about $1,500 on that camera install.
Sounds like you already gave back.
Thank you, that was nice. We don't, I don't ever remember having that happen, that somebody came back and thanked us. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
You have a check to do, ain't you?
But I think we already have a taker over here for it.
Jim, did you know we got some buses for you?
Four of them, didn't we?
Four. Did you tell him?
Well, the capacity is a bit of a problem.
They have these little phones, stress fuses. We grabbed as many as we could. We don't know how many kids will be on the farm.
We'll have to submit it right then.
We were thinking about you.
Yeah, thank you.
I think we're ready to adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Thanks, do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, all those in favor? All right. Thanks, everybody. Have a nice Thanksgiving.